The time is now 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is now 6:00 PM. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. A reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action for recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for the responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. I would ask that everybody stand for our pledges, and Mr. Grabowski, would you please lead us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. If you will remain standing, we will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Moving on to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Brown, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Happy to do so, Madam President. You know, we love when our community members volunteer in our UMBLE ISD schools, so we have a special group of volunteers at our Community Engagement Department asked us to highlight this month, and that is our dads volunteering through the watchdogs program. And I think Rusty may have a video to play.
Morning, let's go, let's go. School, school, school. Time to go to school. Hey, morning, morning. How y'all doing, man? You all right?
I'm curious about you.
Noah's dad.
Yes, I am Noah's dad. I'm curious. What did you guys pick for number six?
Uh, we did "Time to be brave."
Time to be brave.
You like multiplication? All right, what's five times three?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, good job.
A watchdog is dad of great students. A watchdog is a male role model that takes the time out of their schedule to come out and volunteer in their local schools with their students attending. It gives them an opportunity to experience the everyday life of the student and faculty here at the particular school.
Looking at the schedule and it's, you know, getting some time with Noah at lunchtime, then do some patrolling, you know, within the perimeter, the hallways, outside, inside, and then going to visit some classrooms with the teachers. So, I'm excited. This is the first time doing it, so I'm learning as I'm going, so that'll be fun.
I'm gonna have you cut the bear tickets.
Okay.
And this is really helpful for me because we go through these a lot.
Okay.
And it's just simple, you're just separating them out, right?
Sounds good.
I am super mature.
What's on your pick, Noah?
I'm picking...
Okay, cool. We interact all the time, but he's always wanted me to come, volunteer, and do that kind of stuff on a more on a regular basis, so this presented itself, and it's a good opportunity to really try it out. I get to see him in his world, I get to see how he interacts with his teachers and with his friends, and get a little glimpse into his life here at school that I don't get to see every day. It's wonderful.
It's been pretty eye-opening, to be honest with you, man. You know, you don't realize how much of an influence you can have on these kids, and how much they need a male figure to talk to.
Kids really brighten up just seeing a dad on campus. They'll see you with the lanyard, they'll see that, oh, you're the watchdog, and they'll come up and they'll want to talk to you. And some of these kids really need that, and you can just sit there and listen and change a kid's life. It's unbelievable.
I have you.
It's not a lot of work, not a lot of sacrifice, and just tons of reward on the other side.
We love having our watchdogs here. Our students love them and our staff because they're another set of eyes that go around our campus, they check our doors.
It gives me the reassurance that I am doing something actively as a male role model to protect the student body and faculty here.
People know that there's people out here that are watching after the kids in the community, you know, watching out, you know, for your own kid, and just having that extra pair of eyes and being around, you know, that presence, you know, as a deterrent.
Throughout the day, they help in the library, lunch, recess, they even go into classrooms, and our kids just love having them here because it's another role model for our school.
What time is it?
I'm gonna go, and then she gonna pull three cards so she can catch up. Come on, that's crazy. One, two. Y'all set me up.
Okay, yours is be right on top of that. There you go. That looks awesome, by the way.
The students love when their watchdog is here. Whoever that positive role model is for them, you see how ecstatic they get to see them on campus, and that they took time out of their busy schedule to spend the day with them.
The main things that I come in contact with when meeting new dads or seeing dads in a community that have children at the school, one of their main things is time. And we let them know that, you know, if you have an hour, if you have 45 minutes, if you, you may have the whole day, just whatever time you're willing to sacrifice, we can accommodate, and the admin at the schools will help you and put you in a particular position to where you can patrol, you can help out in car rider lines, or you can help monitor during recess or lunch. So there's more than enough different aspects and categories for our dads to participate in, and when you present those options to them, then it takes that, you know, that 5% to a 95% chance of them showing up.
It's priceless, it's, there's no way to replicate that, right? I get to take a day off of work and spend the day with my son, and help his friends and help his teachers, and it's just super rewarding.
I am a working father as well. I work 80 hours, but I still take the time and find it to dedicate to my kids, because at the end of the day, we are heroes of the hallway here. And to my students here, I'm their hero, and to dedicate that little time means a lot to them.
We often get caught up in a moment of thinking we have to give our kids, you know, all these awesome things, right, in life, and sometimes they just want you to be present in the moment, you know? That doesn't cost a lot, you know, just being here with them. He's gonna talk about this for the next three weeks, I promise you.
Hey, we're calling all dads, stepdads, grandfathers, uncles, brothers, cousins, all community members. We are always in need of dads of great students.
If you want to make a positive impact on UMBLE ISD elementary campus, become a watchdog or join a similar program today. We gotta get to PE.
Sure do. Let's go. All right.
All right, so we'd like to recognize some of the stars of the video. I think some of them are gonna try to be here tonight, so if you're here when I call your name, if you'd please stand and let us give you a big round of applause and a huge thank you for your service. Quentin Stanley. Juan Gomez. We're gonna try to make it, but may not have been able to. Jeffrey Armstrong. How about Rick Miles and Brandon Glassby? Thank you all so, so much for your work in our schools and for volunteering to help, help our students and our staff. We certainly appreciate it. All right, so moving on, we are proud to have UYL State Champions to honor, and I'd like to welcome Assistant Athletic Director Carlisa Dixon to tell us more about the historic Kingwood Coed Spirit Squad. And look at them come forward. Did I say Kingwood High? It's Kingwood Park. Don't hold that against me, squad. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bodron, for correcting me on that. I apologize.
All right. Good evening, UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees and Dr. Brown. I am here tonight to recognize a historic accomplishment in UMBLE ISD athletics. To give you some background, the University of Ennis' Galactic League added the UYL Spirit State Competition in 2016, and entered this year had crowned 85 Spirit State Champions from Class 1A to 6A in the coed category since its inception. On January 16th, the Kingwood Park Coed Spirit Team competed at the 2025 UYL Spirit State Championships in Fort Worth, Texas. Kingwood Park was one of 27 coed spirit teams from across the state to compete. The Panthers were one of 13 to advance to the finals. With a final score of 91.37 points, Kingwood Park was crowned the 2025 UYL Spirit Coed State Champions. This marks the first ever UYL Spirit State Championship in UMBLE ISD history. Let us take this opportunity to congratulate the 2025 UYL Spirit Coed State Champions, Coach Sharp and the Panthers of Kingwood Park High School. Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations to Kay Park, that's a, that's a great, great honor, and I know that takes a lot, a lot of work and time, and so we certainly appreciate that. All right, so let's talk about counselors. Counselors are really important in helping our students and schools, and in UMBLE ISD, we have some of the best counselors in the state, and you're gonna hear about a recognition tonight that just proves that. And so Ms. Ty Hobbs, UMBLE ISD Director of Counseling, will come to the podium and share some exciting news with us.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Brown. I'm honored tonight to recognize a record-setting 12 UMBLE ISD counseling teams who were recently recognized at the Texas School Counselor Association Conference in Galveston, Texas in February for winning the prestigious Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas, better known as the CREST Award. The CREST Award is a symbol of excellence in counseling services and recognizes school counselors for their exceptional contributions to student development, academic achievement, and students' well-being. Additionally, in UMBLE ISD, our students benefit from a comprehensive and personalized counseling program, and these 12 campuses have demonstrated their commitment to our students and students' success. There are 32 counselors who are responsible for receiving and winning the CREST Award this year, and I'd like to start with our elementary campuses as we have a representative from each campus to represent those teams. Starting with Atascasita Springs Elementary, we have Veronica Acosta and her principal, Cheryl Fennel. Unfortunately, as you know, the weather is pretty torrential, and some of our counselors and principals are still stuck in traffic. Representing Elm Grove Elementary is Elaine Dabney with her principal, Cassie Pfeifer. Representing Fall Creek Elementary is Amanda Baba with her principal, Tanisha Oyanyi. And representing Groves Elementary is Andrea Jean. Representing UMBLE Elementary is Sarah Robinson with her principal, Ms. Veronica Hernandez. Representing River Pines Elementary is Stephanie Zamora with her principal, Rachel Dunn. And representing Timbers Elementary is Cindy Jones with her assistant principal, Lori Pascal. Congratulations, counselors. Now representing our secondary campuses, starting with our middle schools, representing Kingwood Middle School is Ms. Erin Gutierrez with her principal, Michael Curl. Representing Riverwood Middle School is Shayla Green with her assistant principal, Mandy Fontenot. Representing Timberwood Middle School is Delilah Nichols with her principal, Mr. Ken Buck. Representing Wood Creek Middle School is Mariana Reyna with her principal, Mr. Alan Mooy. Dr. Alan Mooy. And representing UMBLE High School, we have Mr. Esteban Constante with his principal, Mr. Darris Cosby. They didn't make it, okay, they're stuck in the rain. Congratulations. I would just like to say that Mr. Matt Smith, our elementary coordinator, and Mrs. Chastity Irvin, our secondary coordinator, and I are incredibly proud of these outstanding counselors and the work that they're doing in UMBLE ISD. Congratulations again. We would also like to take a moment to recognize the Groves Elementary principal, Mrs. Angela Bland, for being named the Texas School Counselor Association Roshan Fleming Award in the category of Campus Level Administrator of the Year, and she was recognized at the TASC Conference in February. This distinguished award honors administrators who demonstrate outstanding leadership, advocacy, and support for comprehensive school counseling programs. Principal Bland's dedication to fostering a school environment that prioritizes students' academic, social, and emotional well-being has made a significant impact on both students and staff alike. Her unwavering commitment to collaboration with our school counselors ensures that students receive the resources and guidance they need to thrive. We congratulate Principal Angela Bland on this well-deserved recognition and appreciate her continued efforts in championing the role of school counselors in students' success. Congratulations, everyone.
All right, so we certainly do appreciate our counselors and their work, without a doubt, and that recognition was well-deserved. All right, our staff members go above and beyond, and Ms. Jerry Monbarren, Chief Community Engagement Officer, is going to introduce us to some of our superstaffers.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. So yes, our UMBLE ISD employees do go above and beyond each day and to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees. And so each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer, and then from this list, we have selected three honorees to receive additional recognition tonight and some goodies, thanks to an award sponsor. And this month, the Superstaffer Awards are sponsored by Lone Star Market, so please join me in thanking, as I invite Sanaya Zachariah and her husband, who I believe is still in the parking lot trying to find a parking space, but as they come up, please join me in thanking them for sponsoring tonight's awards. So, as you can see on the screen is the list of employees nominated for our elementary schools, and from this great pool of awesome employees, we would like to shine a light tonight on our UMBLE ISD elementary superstaffer, which is the speak teacher from Eagle Springs Elementary, Katie Maxwell. Joining Katie tonight, as she comes on, yeah, come on up, joining Katie is her principal, Gail Hall, and her assistant principal, Becky Norris. So let me tell you a little bit about Katie. She goes above and beyond to support new team members, always offering help and creating a welcoming environment. Despite the challenges of an increased workload, Katie maintains a positive attitude and uplifts her team, ensuring things keep moving forward. She also takes on extra responsibilities, such as mentoring new teachers. Katie's dedication, kindness, and passion for her students make her an invaluable team member and a true asset to Eagle Springs Elementary. Congratulations, Katie. It's the last one? We're gonna do the last one? Yeah. Okay, so here's our list of secondary school nominees for this month, and I'm excited to recognize as UMBLE ISD Secondary Superstaffer, 8th grade Social Studies teacher from Timberwood Middle School, Camry Kraut. Joining her up front is her principal, Kenneth Buck. And so let me tell you about Camry. Ms. Kraut consistently demonstrates kindness and helpfulness, going above and beyond to support both students and colleagues. She creates a highly engaging and academically rigorous curriculum, challenging students to think critically while fostering a love for learning. Through her innovative lessons, she helps students make meaningful connections between history and the real world. Additionally, Ms. Kraut works collaboratively with staff, readily sharing her insights, expertise, and time with anyone in need, making her an invaluable team member and leader. Congratulations, Camry. And last but definitely not least, our UMBLE ISD Support Staffer for this month is the Secondary Science Coordinator at ISC, Alyssa Griffin. Joining Alyssa up front is Lisa McCorkedell and Melissa Hayhurst. So let me tell you about Alyssa. Alyssa was nominated for her exceptional commitment to collaboration, teamwork, and systemic improvement. She consistently exceeds her departmental duties, working across teams to boost our division's collective success. She plays a key role in promoting a culture of teamwork by bringing together diverse perspectives to improve the quality of work. She's been instrumental in implementing systemic changes and executing strategies that create lasting impact. One of her standout achievements is organizing successful conferences that foster knowledge sharing and innovation. She continues to collaborate with other departments and leads campus professional learning sessions, demonstrating her leadership and dedication to continuous improvement. Congratulations, Alyssa. Okay, you can be in picture now? Yeah. Nope, it's gonna be you? Okay, now if all of our superstaffers will come up?
All right, congratulations to all of our superstaffers this evening, and Madam President, I believe that concludes tonight's recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than two minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for today's meeting. If an, if an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complete complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Finale's, please be reminded that electioneering and campaign-related speech are not permitted as part of public comment. The first person signed up for public comment is Nam Ta.
Good evening, UMBLE ISD School Board Trustees and Dr. Brown. My name is Nam Ta, and I am a 5th grader at Fall Creek Elementary. I'm so excited to be here today, and I'd want to begin by thanking Mr. Robert Scarfow for inviting me to speak with all of you. This is such an incredible opportunity for me, and I'm truly honored to speak with you. and I'm truly honored to stand before you. I'm here tonight not just to speak, but to represent. I'm here to lead and follow and to share my journey with you. My name is Nam Thao, and I am a proud immigrant from Vietnam. I am incredibly proud to be a part of this community and to call Umball ISD my home. It's not always easy being far from the place you were born, but this district has given me the chances to grow, learn, and pursue my dreams. I moved to Umball ISD in 2019 and started kindergarten at Fall Creek Elementary. When I first arrived, I didn't know any English, and everything around me felt new and different. But despite the challenges, I was determined to succeed. I worked hard to learn the language, and little by little, I began to find my way today. I am proud to say that I'm fully emerged in my education, and I'm determined to keep growing and learning each day. I believe that the reason I've been able to accomplish these things is because of support I've received from my teachers and school board. Our teachers are dedicated, passionate, and always ready to help us succeed. And the decisions made by this board have a huge impact on our education environment, helping us thrive.
Thank you. And if the public would indulge us, there's been a request that we take a picture together. So, I'm Dr. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Ms. Stacy Ward, Mr. Santiago Acosta, and Mr. Donald Sampley. If, Ms. Ward, if you could come to the podium, and if the next few could come to the, to that front row up there. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Brown. My name is Stacy Ward, and I am the past State President for the Association of Texas State, excuse me, Association of Texas Professional Educators, where we have over 100,000 members statewide, and also past President of Umball ATP, where we have over 1,500 members. And a lot of our members, just to kind of, to let you know, live in rural areas where there are no private schools. So that's kind of lead into my speech, if you will. So I'm going to ask you a question that every teacher here is asked at the beginning of school. What's your why? Why are you here? What made you want to become a member of this Board? What was it that you saw that you said, mm, something's not right, we can do better? What's your job here? Your job is to oversee the management of a school district and are accountable to the public for the success of the district schools. You also advocate for students by representing the interests of the students in the district. So how are vouchers the best, in the best interest of students in our district? There are members that sit on this Board that are in favor of taking public tax dollars for public school students and giving those to private schools. In an already underfunded system, that is the most ridiculous thing I have ever heard. Don't forget, you were elected to represent a public school system in Umball ISD. And I know the whole parent choice thing is a new buzzword, but let me ask you a few questions. How is it choice when private school has all the power to accept or deny any student for any reason? How is it choice when a majority of the counties in Texas, they don't have a single private school in them? How's it choice when private schools don't have to provide transportation or special education services? One of the last things I'll say about the responsibility of the Board is that you communicate with the community. Please do your job and advocate for our students and listen to what the people who voted you in this position are saying. Senator Creighton and the West Texas Billionaires supporting this scam with the Governor and Lieutenant Governor didn't vote you to represent the members of our community, did. And if I could just say one more thing that's not...
I'm sorry, your time is expired. Thank you. Mr. Acosta? Is he here?
He's not here.
Okay, Mr. Sampley?
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Brown. My name is Donald Sampley, and I have been a resident of the district for just shy of 50 years. My wife is a retired teacher. My three children all went through the Umball Independent School Districts from kindergarten to graduation from Umball High School. I'm here tonight to request that you exercise your fiduciary responsibilities, your individual and collective political capital, to oppose public monies to be used for private education, specifically toward our state representative, who is on the Education Committee. The Board that produced this parental choice has been put forward in the Senate by our state Senator, Brandon Creighton. To give you a feeling, last year, from the slides that have been presented, the district received $323 million from the state. At roughly 50,000 students, that's 6,500 a student, round numbers. If 1% of our students, 500, choose to go private, the effect on our state monies are just over $3 million. The current allocation per student is $6,150. Has not changed since 2019. Taking inflation into effect, it has over $1,000 less purchasing power than it would have had in 2019. Again, we are in a cyclical high point of a cycle, as we did in 2011. We were cut back.
Your time is expired.
The vouchers are an entitlement.
Thank you, Mr. Sampley. Thank you. Our next speaker is Teslin Mustaine. And then if I could have Deanie Allen, Larissa Powell, and Mr. Justin Lurie come to the front row for me. Thank you. Mr. Binkley?
I was going to say, I see you guys all looking at me. I should probably turn on my microphone. I would need to refer back to our Board policies and procedures on public commenters. And it's my understanding that the person who signs up to speak is the person who's required to come speak, and so I don't believe somebody can stand in their shoes to provide their comment. If the Board would allow me a speaker's worth of time to get you an answer on that, I can let you know by the, by the time that this current speaker is done speaking.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
I am Deanie Allen, reading specialist and dyslexia specialist. A big thank you to Dr. Brown and his literacy team. I had the honor of presenting information on reading to Dr. Brown and his team. We talked about challenges, opportunities, and solutions. And I am really glad to report that they are willing to think outside the box. So go, team, go for reading. Now, I am sad to hear that our district has decided not to adopt new reading materials this year. For those of you who may not know, these are free materials from the state that come periodically. The district will adopt new math materials and get free materials. We will begin using the free screeners in reading to identify weak areas in our students. The district has decided to improve what is currently in place. Now, we have a patchwork of fixes to three-queuing system, and we know that three-queuing is not the way the brain learns to read. It doesn't match with the science of reading. So what are we, the kids are going to actually read? Will we still use those Fanta's and Penel three-queuing books because they look so cute? It seems from my recent information, i.e. this morning, that more Band-Aids will be added to our program. But I caution, I sincerely hope that the Board does not change its mind at the last minute. I hope that the Board does not sneak in a vote for the Bible-based Bluebonnet series without teacher or community input. Every student deserves a great reading program. Every student deserves to become a good reader who loves to read.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Powell?
Good evening. My name is Larissa Powell. I'm a concerned mother and taxpayer in the district. And for several years, I have been closely watching and speaking about the decisions made by our Board members. Let's just say the last year and a half has been pretty costly. Millions of taxpayer dollars were spent to terminate Dr. Fagan. And now that the Texas Education Agency Commissioner, Mike Morath, has ruled in favor of Umball ISD regarding her termination, I really hope that our district can heal and move forward. However, his report also stated substantial evidence does not support finding a fact 52 statement that the respondent's then-in-house counsel, notably Mr. Newman, was guilty of misconduct. This phrase implies he was not subjected to any criminal or administrative proceedings. Ms. Parker, you played a key role in placing Mr. Thomas Newman on leave to protect the Board and ultimately ensuring his contract was not renewed. Now that he's been cleared of these very allegations, you were so adamant about, will the district be giving him his job back or apologize to him? Furthermore, the district has wasted over $170,000 in open record requests from July 2023 to the present. If we had competent in-house legal counsel, Mr. Newman or Mr. Binkley, wouldn't that number be much lower? I'm very confused why these legal counsels aren't handling our open record request. And tonight, Ms. Parker, you are voting to give a Hoosier and Clark even more money. I want to share an open record request that I received for them. Don't worry, Mr. Binkley, I'm not playing any audios. I don't want you to get Thomas Newman tonight. In January 2024, emails between the district and a Hoosier and Clark revealed discussions on how to work around the Texas Open Records Act. Then on March... Have those documents if you want to see them.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Mr. Lurie?
Tonight, I stand before you not to revisit history, but to hold accountable those who orchestrated one of the most egregious financial mismanagements in our district's history. As mentioned, the Texas Education Agency has now affirmed what many of us have long known. Dr. Fagan's tenure is marked by conflicts of interest, failures of leadership, and a calculated effort to conceal wrongdoing at the highest levels of this institution. Now let's talk about the cost, not just in credibility, but in dollars. Over $1.8 million was siphoned from the district's coffers, funds that had, should have been allocated to classrooms, to teachers, to the very students we claim to serve. This is not an abstract figure. This is taxpayer money that was hemorrhaged into legal fees, external investigations, and procedural delays, all because three Board members prioritize political alliances over public duty. It's the usual bunch. It is Sitten, Dixon, and the empty chair Holmes. They not only enabled this fiscal recklessness, but actively obstructed transparency. They thought, they sought to suppress Title IX reports, shield high-ranking officials from accountability, and deflect attention from the realities of Fagan's administration. Even when the weight of evidence was insurmountable, they chose silence over stewardship. Let's not forget their words. When questioned about the Title IX reports, they dismissed concerns as mere locker room talk. When faced with indisputable evidence, one of them responded that it took my breath away. Not at the misconduct, but at the fact that the truth was finally being exposed. Now, as we turn the page of the new superintendent, we must ensure that this institution never again becomes a fortress of cronyism and cover-ups. So we remember, we demand accountability, and we expect better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lurie. Mr. Binkley?
Madam President, it is my interpretation of the, the Board governing policies and the Board practice that the individual who signed up to speak must be the, the one who comes to speak, that someone else cannot stand in their place. I would remind those who, who are not able to make it tonight that you can certainly provide your comments in writing to the Board by sending them to the, the Board Secretary, and then they would be sent to the full Board.
Thank you. Mr. Ford, Dr. Martinez, Ms. DeLeon, and Mrs. Ford. Mr. Ford, if you could come to the podium, and everyone else to that front row. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Scott Ford, teacher in the district. Before I begin, I did want to bring attention to the fact that on February 5th, the State Board of Education here in Texas proclaimed February as Career and Technology Education CTE Month in Texas. So this month is supposed to be a celebration of my fellow CTE faculty and staff, the folks who are making a difference in the future of our kids' lives and providing them job skills and potential careers when they graduate. I certainly hope that we can have some sort of acknowledgement at the next Board meeting. Hoping that the news was relayed to you that this was, in fact, CTE Awareness Month. But in that vein, I did want to share what we did last week. So February break, wow, this is already getting away from me. February break, once again, we had about 50 folks and myself give up our vacation time to do a IT certification review. And we actually had an elementary school kid at this one. I mean, we had two middle school kids and a bunch of high school kids and a lot of other stuff. But it went very well. The ISC staff is phenomenal. They are amazing. We lost power on Thursday, half the building without power. We had another room within 10 minutes, so there was no interruption in instruction. But the ISC folks have been phenomenal hosts for us. They provided for everything that we've possibly needed. And also, special thanks to Melissa Lee for being a district admin who actually came out to see what was going on. This is their second time, actually. She came out to Sertober to check on us, to make sure we had everything we needed and there weren't any issues. So I greatly appreciate those in this district who are supporting our CTE programs, as well as supporting our IT certification programs. Your efforts are not just going unnoticed by me, but our kids greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate you, and so do our parents. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Dr. Martinez?
Hello, good evening, everyone. I am actually speaking before the Board this evening because one of the things that I would like to recommend, and I do know that you guys will be discussing part of it, dealing with the signs, banners, marquee scoreboards. I don't know the ins and outs of it. But one of the things that I think would be very important, especially as we have a school Board election coming up, is that if there was any type of way that the Board or the district could consider actually putting in signs at those schools, like the yard signs, but basically only just says, there's a school Board election. Not to advertise for any one particular person, but I think one of the problems that we have when it comes to school Board elections is that, number one, they're in the month of May. And so a lot of people don't actually go out to vote at that time. And then the other main concern about it is that in January of last year, there was a discussion about going to single districts, and it was primarily so that we could actually have representation from different areas within the district. As of right now, zone-wide, I believe there are three Board members who are pretty much in the Keenwood School District area and four that are in the Tascasita School area. And there aren't any on the Board that are from the Summer Creek area or the Umball area. I also do understand that it depends on who goes and votes. And so based on data from 2023, I believe there were 10% to 15% of the people who voted from the Keenwood area, but only 1% to 5% that voted from the other school district areas. So I think one of the things is that as a school Board, if we can just try to advertise so that the parents in the district will know that there is a, that there's actually an election coming up. It's just to show them and let them see, and especially when it's at the door. The other thing that I would like to actually compliment the Board on is that in regards to the clinic, the district, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm going to forget that part, but the health clinic, that's it. I'm glad to know that it's up and running for the Umball students, especially for those to be able to get their physicals done.
Good evening, school board members and UMBLE ISD community. My name is Gracie DeLeon, and I'd like to speak about our Hispanic student population. According to the UMBLE ISD website, in 2023, 38% of our district was Hispanic, and projections indicate that this number has likely increased in 2024. As someone whose first language is Spanish, I understand some of the challenges that some of our students face. For those who primarily speak Spanish, it's crucial to empower them by helping them master the English language. One way to do this is by creating opportunities for English language immersion, especially at the elementary level. When I was in elementary school, there were no ESL classes, so immersion with English-speaking students was my only option. I'm grateful for that, as it opened many doors for me. I'm also excited to announce that I am running for position one on UMBLE ISD's school board and hope to earn your trust and support.
Sorry, remember, our election hearing is not appropriate during public comment.
Okay, thank you. Buenas noches, miembros of la junta escolar y comunidad de UMBLE ISD. Mi nombre... Can I speak in Spanish?
Of course.
Okay. Ah, mi nombre es Gracia La Deleon, y estoy postulándome para desempeñar el puesto... Oh, let me leave that out. Quiero hablar de nuestros estudiantes hispanos, los cuales representan más de 38% de la población estudiantil del distro. Mi primer idioma es el español, y entiendo a la perfección las necesidades y desafíos a nuestros estudiantes. Son esas necesidades y desafíos los que me motivan. Me deseo para trabajar y crear oportunidad y mejorar la calidad de la educación de nuestros estudiantes. Soy Gracia La Deleon, y muchísimas gracias. I left the other parts out.
Thank you.
For those that didn't understand.
Thank you, Ms. DeLeon. Mrs. Ford?
My name is Kristy Ford. Today, I come to you as the Vice Chair of the Libertarian Party of Harris County and as a community member. A central theme for many of the candidates has been to increase transparency and accountability within the district. With that in mind, we are happy to announce that Saturday, February 22nd, at Spring Creek Barbecue, the Libertarian Party of Harris County is hosting a reverse candidate forum from one to four. Director Billy, at large, Billy Pierce, will moderate the event for the nine candidates who will be in attendance. Faculty, staff, and community members are welcome to go and share their thoughts, concerns, and feelings about what's going on in our district with our candidates to let them know. This is a unique event, which we believe hasn't been done in Texas, but we're giving the community members a chance to share their thoughts with the candidates all in one place. And so the candidates talking to the people, the people are going to share their concerns with the candidates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. And last but not least, Dr. Janie Branham.
Good evening, school board trustees and Dr. Roger Brown. My name is Janie Branham, a proud parent of HISD graduates. I will begin by thanking the school board trustees for selecting Superintendent Dr. Roger Brown to serve the students in our community. Dr. Roger Brown is an experienced administrator and has firsthand information about the strengths and weaknesses of our schools. As a parent, I'm extremely impressed with his character traits, his knowledge and expertise of how children learn. Additionally, Dr. Roger Brown has great influence in our community. As superintendent, he has already set the tone of the school district by being engaged with the parents, the teachers, the businesses, and the organizations. This is a new beginning for us as parents. I'm extremely excited for this opportunity that parents have for a new beginning. He has already implemented an instructional plan that will bring about real changes. As parents, we can support Dr. Roger Brown's academic plan. We can, as parents, insist that our children attend school every day and aim for perfect attendance at the end of every six weeks. Continue to love our children and remind them every morning that we love our schools, we love our teachers, we love to learn math, reading, and writing. We have to insist that our children come to our schools prepared, mentally prepared, ready to listen to our teachers. And we can remind our children every day that safety is a personal responsibility, respecting other students as a top priority. Staying safe is a student's responsibility. The responsibility for our children's academic success rests on our children's, as parents. Let's do what we can to meet that responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Branham. I appreciate it. Next is comments by individual board members. I'll begin with Mr. Grabowski.
Well, good evening, everyone. I've got two topics. The first I'd like to talk is about the Education Foundation. You can find information about that right on the home webpage, umblist.net. I'd like to talk about some scholarship opportunities that are out there, a very important type of stuff. And some people think scholarship is just to go to maybe an elite university of some type, but it was emphasized to me in conversation that they've awarded scholarships for some youth that wanted to learn how to paint cars, to be a game warden, to be a doctor, and a pretty cool one, a blind student learned how to read music. And so a child's imagination is their only limit. Go on to the Education Foundation, how to get a scholarship, I'm gonna go over that at the very end. There's a Dream Team Scholarship also, and it's the most inclusive, with the only restraint being that you have a GPA of 2.0 or above. So it's wide open for a lot of people, and there are 78 unfilled scholarships at this time, and the deadline is March 16th at midnight. At midnight, it comes too late, so at 11:59 PM, March 16th. Again, go to the UMBLE ISD homepage and scroll down to the Education Foundation tile, and that's where you'll find the information. Secondly, I'd like to thank Dr. Lee and soon-to-be Dr. Davis, I think you're both out there. They put up with my wife and I watching the raving, raising livestock pets, which, growing up in New Jersey, I didn't know a whole lot about. But I want to go over some of the things that these very unique children do. It's very kind of cool where they, especially the Unified Show, which is the shirt I have on now, where they have buddies and unified athletes, sped students that team up to help raise an animal. So what's into raising an animal? Some amazing facts. They need to do the financial planning for the purchase of the animal, so from a rabbit all the way up to a steer is purchased by the individual. They feed, the barn space, and possible medical care that they might become. What do they need to do? They have to feed and water the animal twice a day, exercise the animal twice a day to help it build muscle, and then they have to train the animal every day for when it becomes showtime. And when you think a high schooler's first bell is 7:25, and I have a high schooler, it is everything we can do to drag her to school at that hour that these kids are at the barn at 6:30 in the morning and then again at night at 6:30. They're some special kind of students. They also weigh the animal nearly weekly to chart the weight and adjust the feed, and all of these responsibilities are done willingly and through their own love for the animal. It was a little tough to hear, especially for my wife. Then they sell the animal at the auction or the freezer sale, and we had to hear, Kendra had to hear over and over, it's a project, not a pet. So it was a terrific experience. Again, thank you, Dr. Lee and Mrs. Davis, soon-to-be Dr. Davis. So thank you both. That's all. Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Mrs. Lamond Dixon?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to just give kudos to the watchdogs. I've gone to some of their meetings in the past. I've had an opportunity to meet Quentin and Brandon on multiple occasions. I just really think it's an amazing program, and I'm just thankful that they were highlighted today. Also, congratulations to our state champ squad, and thank you to Ms. Carlisa Dixon for sharing that information with us. And also, congratulations on the Crest Awards. I mean, I've known for a very long time with my four kiddos and meeting with counselors from different aspects how special they are. So thank you to Ms. Hobbs for sharing the Crest Award information with the Board. Mr. Sitten, the UMBLE rodeo, I know you're gonna talk all about this, but I just wanted to say, the parts that I was able to attend, it was as exemplary as it has always been and even more this year. I always love the live auction. It's one of my most favorite parts of the UMBLE rodeo, but I just wanted to say, I know it takes a lot of people to pull that off, but thank you so much for your leadership. And last, I'd like to wish everyone, I know Mr. Ford mentioned the CTE Month, so I'll say happy CTE Month, but I also wanted to say for February, to everyone, have a wonderful Black History Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lamond Dixon. Mr. Sitten?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Ms. Lamond Dixon, on those kind words, and Mr. Grabowski, on your education in livestock. So yes, this year, the barbecue and rodeo cook-off just completed a record-breaking year. We don't have all the final numbers, but what we do know is that we served between 18,000 and 20,000 people over a two-weekend period, by far the largest event in the history of UMBLE Texas. Records, barbecue, we had a record attendance, we had record revenues. Rodeo, we had a record revenue for a two-day rodeo. You may remember that the last two years, we had a Sunday performance. This year, our Sunday performer basically backed out late, and then we realized, oh, it's Super Bowl Sunday. So we chose not to have that Sunday performance. So based on revenue alone for the two-weekend event, it was the largest two-day rodeo and two-day barbecue cook-off event we've ever had. It takes an army, tons of volunteers, tons of volunteer hours, tons of community support, sponsors, et cetera, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Jerry Monbaron and her entire staff. They worked behind the scenes, they worked in front of the scenes, they worked tirelessly to help us pull off such a big event. So Jerry, thank you, and tell your team that we really, really appreciate you, that we couldn't do it without you. And I'll finish with this. I think I can collectively speak for the Board. Our thoughts and prayers are going out to Mr. Holmes, who is in the hospital tonight, had surgery earlier this week, had some complications, talked to him today. He sent his regards, wished he could be here with us, and hopefully he'll be released from the hospital within the next day or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Mr. Kirchhoff?
Thank you, Madam President. How I follow that up, Robert, that was good stuff. A few weeks back, the Oaks Elementary School hosted their annual suite on reading in honor of Valentine's Day. Principal Smith and her staff, led by Kimberly Phelps, rolled out the red carpet for the guest readers. I was joined by fellow trustees, Ms. Lamond Dixon, Robert Scarfo, Mike Grabowski, Superintendent Roger Brown, and many other district employees. Can't say enough about Principal Smith and Kimberly Phelps. And I think it's the fourth year I've gone, and they just do an outstanding job, and we get to read to the kids, and it's just a great hour spent, so well done. Thank you.
Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. I just wanted to, again, he had to leave, it was getting late, Mr. Tahoe spoke, met him at a Falkreys Manor's lunch a couple weeks back that Mr. Kirchhoff attended. And I just want to tell you, he's quite an interesting young man. I sat down at the table, first thing he asked me was, "So, Mr. Scarfo, what do you think about the presidential pick to head this Department of Education?" And I wasn't sure I heard him right, but I kind of, I said, "Well," because he said to me, "You know, she's not an educator." And I said, "That's interesting." I said, "She's not, she's a businessperson." I said, "And sometimes, you know, somebody with business skills can come into academia and make some positive change." So anyway, the discussion went on, and he was a very, very engaged young man, and I'm sorry he didn't get a chance to finish his speech, which he had written, he had shared with me. And I read one thing he wasn't able to say, but he said, "I'm dedicated to my education because, as my quote goes, 'Education is key, and politics is the door, the key that opens, it opens.'" I believe that education comes first, and I believe politics is what education will be needed for. So he's an engaged young man, look out for him in the years ahead. He's just a great example of what our staff is able to accomplish over a short period of time with a student who came here, as he said, with no English language. I just want to also say congratulations to Ms. Goff and the elementary ELA coordinators, another great spelling bee that was won by, I'm not sure if I'm gonna say his name right, Ali Kawaja at Riverwood Middle School, and the runner-up was Emma Del Rio of Grobes Elementary. That's quite a fun event, if you ever get the chance to attend. And it's really a lot of competition, because you've got elementary, middle school kiddos competing against each other. And a quick shout-out during the counselor recognitions, I also saw, there was an email that came out about the Kingwood Middle School Counselor, Ms. Wooten, who was announced just the other day as one of the five finalists in Texas for a Secondary Counsel Award in the HEB Excellence in Education Awards. That'd be great. I mean, she got $1,000, KMS received 15, and if she goes on and takes the other, it jumps up substantially. So congratulations to her. And I had on my notes to talk about scholarships. Mr. Grabowski already covered that, 78 scholarships, don't let them go to waste. And I'll just end with one last thing. I always enjoy, with the Board Appreciation Month, I always look through a lot of the cards that we get, and I always pick out one or two to read, because they are sent to all of us, so it's not to me or any individual, but to the Board. And just to, I'll just quickly share. Dear Board Members of UMBLE ISD, thank you for making schools around the district a safe place to learn and grow. Thanks to you, I'm able to attend school every week, learning new things and making friends. Sincerely yours, a proud member of AMS NJHS. And one other one, dear school board member, thank you for what you have done. You deserve, you deserve more credit than what you have received. Boy, there is an understatement, huh? We sure are. But, you know, this student pointed that out. I appreciate your work and efforts, and keep working hard. We will do that. But anyway, just a couple of the many, many cards we get. So we do, we do read them, and it's always fun to come back and relay one or two of them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. I want to take a minute to thank those folks that come here to give public comment, whether we agree or we disagree. I fully support everyone's, to have their opportunity to express themselves and to take advantage of their First Amendment rights, and I just really want to thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Sitten, for your leadership on the UMBLE rodeo. It was an awesome event. I had, Jason and I had a great time. It was absolutely wonderful. And I wanted to take a minute to thank all of the volunteers that, I know it takes an army of volunteers to make that wonderful, wonderful event come to life. And Jerry, you and your team as well, thank you guys so much. Every February, the Career and Technology Community celebrates CTE Month to raise awareness of the role that CTE has in readying our learners for college and career success. My husband, Jason, is a product of this district. He learned to weld at UMBLE High School. He works for the airline and still utilizes that skill today, but I want to take a second to acknowledge and thank every CTE employee that we have and all of our kids learning for their future. And with that, Dr. Brown?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to give a congratulations to Millie Pendleton, Shadow Force Elementary, and Arabella Ramirez, Kingwood Middle School. Their artwork was chosen to be showcased at the State of Texas, at the Bullock Texas State History Museum during the month of March. So that's from across the state of Texas. We had two students that were chosen for that. So congratulations.
of Texas. We had two students that were chosen for that, so congratulations to them. And the, and then to Assistant Principal, uh, Dr. Kelly Cox. She was, uh, chosen and selected as the recipient of this year's prestigious Dr. Ronnie Dean Byrne Literacy Award. And so congratulations to her and her work on literacy. We appreciate that so much. That is just so important. And then, uh, a shout-out to Dr. Lee and, and, and all of the team, uh, for the livestock auction. They raised, uh, the students, uh, raised a little over three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars this year. So that's just amazing, and that takes a lot of work, um, on Dr. Lee's part. That, that takes a lot of work on Dr. Lee's part and the team, and obviously the students, you know, they, they prepare for that. Well, they're preparing for next year now. And so, uh, congratulations to all of them and to our community that comes out and supports. That's just an amazing event, and we appreciate all of that. And, um, also, uh, huge happy birthday to someone, Karen Martin. Couldn't do it without her, so congratulations on your birthday! And what a better place to spend it. I know, she said, I said, "Karen, what do you want for your birthday?" And she said, "A board meeting." I said, "Oh, you get that." That's all I have, Madam President.
Yeah, I've spent my birthday on this dais too. Never, no better place, right? Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Scarfo, may I have a motion?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Uh, bear with me, I'm pinch-hitting tonight, uh, for Mr. Holmes as he recovers. Uh, Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Move that the Board approves the Administration's Personnel Recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grabowski. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes, one, two, how many are here? Six? Six-oh.
Item 4B.
Item 4B, Student Expulsions. Mr. Scarfo, may I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move that the Board approves the Administration's recommendation of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Ms., uh, all right, Mr. Grabowski seconds. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes, six-oh. Item 4C, Consider and Take Possible Action Regarding a Title IX Report and Findings Related to a Complaint Filed by the Assistant Athletic Director Against Former Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Scarfo, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move that the Board direct legal counsel to provide the independent decision-maker report related to the complaint filed, to the complaint filed by the Assistant Athletic Director against the former superintendent of schools to any requesters who may request this documentation with the names and any other confidential information under the law redacted as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grabowski. Any discussion? Mr. Sitton?
Yes, um, the reason I, I wanted to ask a question, because we, we've approved stuff like this before, and do we know for sure that the Assistant Athlet, Athletic Director was the one that filed the complaint? And the reason I ask that is the original complaint against the, uh, Executive Director, the UIL Athletic Director, what we found out in the February report from the, um, the, the, the final, the final report from February ninth of 2024, that the Assistant Athletic Director never filed a formal Title IX complaint. In August, August fifteenth of 2023, the Title IX Coordinator, who was hired by Walsh, is the one that filed the formal Title IX complaint. So if we approve this, and the Assistant Athletic Director didn't actually file the formal complaint, would we be in some sort of violation? That's my question. It's a legal question.
Mr. Binkley, would you like to go into closed session and discuss the legal matter?
I, I would prefer to provide legal advice in closed session. I was trying to think of what I could say.
Let's take a short break, and we will, uh, reset, not, well, we will go into closed session for a short time.
A point of order, Madam President. Would you please make sure I'm included in closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The time is now eight forty-six. We will reconvene into open session. Mr. Grabowski, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to amend the motion by striking, quote, "related to the complaint filed by the Assistant Athletic Director," unquote, and inserting, quote, "dated February sixth, 2025 regarding the complaint," end quote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scarfo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, six-oh. Mr. Scarfo, uh, may I please have, um, amended motion?
Yes, Madam President. Uh, the amended motion, I hope I have this right. I move to direct legal counsel to provide the decision-maker report dated February sixth, 2025 regarding the complaint against the former superintendent of schools to any requesters who may request the documentation with the names and any other confidential information under the law redacted as discussed in closed session.
Mr. Binkley, do I need a second on the amended motion?
No, because the motion as amended is the live motion.
Okay. All right. Um, any discussion? Mr. Scar, uh, Sitton?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, in light of the reason that, that I questioned, um, uh, the original motion, uh, and the idea that we don't have the, the initial report in front of us, and there's not a, um, uh, we don't know exactly who filed the report and who didn't file the report. Uh, I just want to make that a matter of record.
Anyone further? Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Well, can we just ask specifically in open session, who filed the Title IX complaint?
Mr. Binkley?
So the, my honest answer right now is, I would have to go back and look and, and be, uh, extra sure who did that. Uh, speaking off the top of my head, I, I don't know that information right now, if it was filed by the complainant or if it was filed, uh, by the, the Title IX Coordinator on behalf of the complainant. So I, I would want to be very careful of my answer in that regard.
Okay, so Madam President, I move that we table Item 4C until we can have legal clarification on who actually filed the Title IX complaint. Personally, I have no issue at all releasing information. I think all information should be released based on transparency, but I think we need all of the details from a legal perspective before we vote publicly on releasing information. When we don't, like, the, the original language said, filed by the Assistant Athletic Director, we don't know who filed it, and I think we just need to take some time and bring it back in March. And I know that's a very long motion, but, but there was clarification within my motion. But the motion is to table Item 4C until we have legal clarification and bring it back at the March Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Seconded by Mr. Sitton. All of those in favor of tabling the motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails, four-two. Mr. Binkley?
We still need to vote on the orig, on the original motion as amended now unless there is additional discussion.
Does anybody have any further discussion on the original motion as amended?
Well, um, the document need, will be released regardless if it, if it was filed by the Assistant Athletic Director or somebody acting in her behalf. The document needs to be released, in my opinion. And so, that's what we're voting on, is the release of the record. Um, it was paid for by the taxpayer, and they have a right to look at the document, um, as legal, as it, as it is legally redacted, um, in that form. So, um, anybody further?
One quick question?
Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Um, Mr. Binkley, when the information is released, by the, by that time, I know it takes some time to get the redacting, uh, done, will it include who filed the actual Title IX complaint for the public? Because we definitely want to be transparent, like Mrs. Parker said.
If, if the decision-maker report specifies that information, it would certainly still be in there. Um, it, names may be redacted, but certainly titles, uh, would be in there. It should be clear as to whether it was filed by the individual or on behalf of the individual by the Title IX Coordinator. I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody further? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, four-two. All right, moving on to Item Five, our consent agenda. Item Five A, Approval of Minutes for the January eighth, 2025 Special Board Meeting. Consent. Item Five B, Approval of Minutes for the January fourteenth, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Consent. Item Five C, Approval of Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding fifty thousand dollars in the aggregate or twenty-five thousand individually.
Pulled.
C is pulled. Item Five D, uh, 2024, 2025 Construction and Construction Related Purchases. Consent. Item Five E, Bond Fund Capital Projects and Budgetary Transfers. Consent. Item Five F, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments. Consent. Item Five G, Tax Refunds, Overpayments and Paid in Error. Consent. Item Five H, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Consent. Item Five A, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2021-005-11 General Merchandise. Consent. Item Five J, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2021-006-11 Educational Service Consultants. Consent. Item Five K, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2023-102-30 Services, Repairs, Maintenance, Installation District-Wide. Consent. Item Five L, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2024-102-6 Software Subscriptions and Web-Based Applications. Consent. Item Five M, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2024-104-45 Books and Publications. Consent. Item Five N, RFP Number 2025-16E Rate Category Two Equipment. Consent. Item Five O, RFP Number 2025-17 Category One Fully Managed Lease Lit Fiber. Consent. Item Five P, Approval of RFP 2025-20 Signs, Banners, Markes, Scoreboards, and Services. Consent. Item Five Q, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2025-105A Awards and Promotional Items. Consent. Item Five R, Approval of Additional Vendors Related to RFP 2025-106A Performing Arts Equipment, Rental Supplies and Services. Consent. Item Five S, Architect Selection for Willow Creek Elementary Foundation Project. Consent. Item Five T, Contractor Selection for UMBLE High School Additions and Repairs Phase Two. Consent. Item Five U, Deductive Change Order. Consent. Item Five V, Instructional Materials Adoption Selection Committee. Consent. Item Five W, Target Improvement Plan for Oaks Elementary. Consent. Mr. Scarfo, may I please have a motion on the consent agenda item?
Yes, Madam President. I move to, I move to approve the consent agenda with the, uh, A through W, with the exception of Item C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sitton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes, six-oh. Returning to item, our full, our pulls, our pulled item, Item 5C. Mr. Scarfo, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve the CH listing of vendors and estimated annual costs for contract awards and renewals for the purchase of goods, professional services, and/or non-construction services that are estimated to exceed fifty thousand dollars in the aggregate or twenty-five thousand dollars individually for the 2024 to 25 fiscal year.
May I please have a second? Seconded by Mr. Kertschoffer. Um, Mr. Sitton, do you have discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President, thank you. Uh, the reason I pulled this is, uh, we once again have, uh, Aluja and Clark, uh, auditors on here with another increase. Uh, this is the second time that we've increased their, their budget, and I have no idea what they're, what they're, um, what they're auditing. Um, and I didn't, uh, vote for them the first time. I didn't vote for it the second time, and I'm not going to vote for it again, and I feel bad for these other folks that are on this list. Uh, I, I just, I don't understand why we continue to spend money on outside folks, and especially one that comes with some baggage here. Um, they, they've done a, a special audit for us that came with mixed reviews, and then we approved them, and now we've increased their budget twice, and the Board has yet to even discuss what they're auditing, what they're doing. When I brought it up last time, it was, um, special projects or, uh, giving them a little extra leeway to, to help us. It's so vague. I don't know what they're doing, and I, I don't want them doing it, whatever it is. Uh, so, uh, I just need some clarification of why they're here, why we're increasing their budget for the second time in as many months, or within three months anyway, and what are they working on? Because we, as a Board, have not, all we've done is approved their budget, and we haven't approved anything that they're working on.
Thank you, Mr. Sitton. Mr. Kertschoffer?
Counsel?
Yes, so, um, Aluja and Clark, uh, are performing an audit that was specifically requested by the Board Audit Committee. Um, however, because this is an ongoing audit, uh, we, we really can't discuss the details publicly at this time.
Mr. Sitton?
So... Committees cannot direct taxpayer-funded projects. It has to be approved by the Board. They can recommend to the Board that a audit is done on a specific, specific project, but the Board has to approve that, especially when we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxpayer funds. Not a single committee or a single Board Member can direct the district or taxpayer funds.
That is correct, and so that's why it's on the, the Board Agenda tonight, and it's my understanding that the audit that's being performed is the same audit that has, uh, been ongoing as, as part of the prior approvals. So the Board did approve Aluja and Clark previously to engage in the work, and they are continuing to engage in that work at this time. And I'm not trying to be coy, I just, because, because it's ongoing, I don't, I, I can't, again, publicly provide that.
No, and I, I get that, I understand that, but what did we approve before? In their original, in their...
I'm sorry you were not recognized, Mr. Sitton.
I'm sorry.
So, what I would say is, everybody on this dais and Ms. Lamond Dixon on the webinar had the opportunity to ask that question of the Administration before the meeting tonight, so you, you could have asked before the meeting. If you would like to go into close, we can discuss it. Mr. Sitton?
There's no need to go into close. I'm just asking a simple question. We approved them as a Board, majority, but we did not approve a project. We didn't approve a project. We approved them as an external auditor. And if you want to go there, I'll go there. How many questions have I asked over the last twelve months to you directly via email that never went answered? So why waste my freaking time asking a question if I'm not going to get an answer? So then I'm going to come to a public Board Meeting, and I'm going to talk to the people out here. Do you think it's right that we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a project that was not talked about at this Board Dais and approved by this Board? Because that's the fact. Now, if y'all want to continue doing this crap, then do it. Vote for it. You'll pass it because you got the numbers. That's the way you've been doing it for a year and a half. But committees, and I'm getting really tired of being in the community and them people saying, well, this is what the board wants. Well, what do I tell the board? This is what the board wants. And I'm going, I don't know what you're talking about, because the board hadn't even talked about it. The board hadn't discussed it. Go back and look at the meetings. When did that happen? It didn't. So you want to be coy? That's fine. I understand Mr. Binkley's point and the audit committee's point, because it's an ongoing whatever. But we did not approve it as a board. We did not approve spending taxpayer money on an audit as a board. Committees cannot do that. Individual board members cannot do that. And this board continues to violate that simple premise over and over and over again. So y'all vote.
Any further discuss, Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Yeah, and I just want to state for the record, it is always prudent for board members, uh, to ask questions in advance of the meeting, but we also have the right legally to ask them in the actual meeting. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
I'll agree with that for sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Item passes four, two. Info, information items. Item seven A, intruder detection audit. Mr. Perkins? Any?
Yeah, Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder audit detection pursuant to updated legal requirements. Six schools were reviewed. Uh, two findings were identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective actions have been completed at this time. Further detail has been provided to the board in executive session for purposes of safety and security.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Item seven B, updates board associations and committees. Would anybody like to give an update? Mr. Kurt Choffer?
The internal audit department has outlined several goals across short, medium and long-term timeframes. Short-term objectives include shifting to a collaborative approach with auditees, transitioning from control to control testing, simplifying reports and fostering a more inclusive departmental culture. Medium-term goals involve auditing schools in person, developing an audit plan based on risk assessments and ongoing staffing training. Long-term goals focus on cross-training staff both horizontally and vertically and creating audits for district-wide shared services such as procurement and IT. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurt Choffer. Anybody else? Item seven C, board discussion regarding outside counsel fees related to recent Title IX complaints. Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on this item. You know, as was requested, a summary of legal expenses by category has been created, as you'd see in the attachment, uh, that's included with the agenda. And as you can see, it exceeds 1.8 million dollars. Uh, this amount includes the, uh, I'll say bogus Title IX against me for $93,000, the, uh, the cost of the superintendent's hearing and appeal at, uh, over $260,000. Well, I mean, it's all there in, in detail. You could see it. But I just want to say this, a great deal of criticism has been leveled at, at, well, at least at some members of the board, um, asserting the expenditures were unnecessary and grossly irresponsible. But I just want to read, uh, some quotes, and they're exact quotes, not my words, from reports of the two TEA administrative law judges and even an independent decision-maker, just for good measure, as to the actual reason these expenditures were required. So bear with me. From the, uh, administrative judge's report on the appeal, because the executive director UIL was both a complaint and a subject of Title IX investigations, petitioner could not oversee those investigation as respondent, and that's the district's, as respondent superintendent. This required respondent to hire outside counsel and investigators, costing the district approximately 1.3, and now we know it's, uh, over 1.8 million dollars. The record reflects that it was, that it was disruptive to the school environment and to employees who witnessed but were afraid to complain about the, uh, E, Executive Director UIL's conduct as petitioner served as the apex of the district administrative, administrative, uh, the district's administrative complaint and accountability process. Respondent asserts that petitioner, as the district's chief officer entrusted with all operations and oversight, should have recognized the disruptive nature of the relationship and taken steps to remedy the nascent problems, but she did not. Petitioner's status as superintendent underscored her duty to exercise judgment in recognizing and heading off the issues her relationship caused before they erupted and led to public scandal. Her tolerance of the EDUIL's conduct damaged morale and led to negative publicity for the district. Substantial evidence supports the board's finding the petitioner violated the policy. And the record, and she goes on to say, um, about the contract, the record reflects that when the board renewed petitioner's contract in April 2023, it knew the dating relationship existed, but was unaware of the brewing disruption. And then in the hearing officers' report, um, after the three-day hearing, after allegations, and I, and I quote, "After allegations were raised that the EDUIL's alleged violations of school district policy, including engaging in violations of Title IX, Dr. Fagan failed to take remedial action." Mr. Kurt Choffer, Mrs. Parker testified that not only did Dr. Fagan fail to enforce board policy DK local, but Dr. Fagan put the board in, in the position of having to arrange for an independent investigation of Title IX complaints made against the UDIL, EDUIL, because there was no one in the district who did not fall under Dr. Fagan's line of supervision in the organizational chart. Respondent's disruptive relationship with the EDUIL necessitated outside counsel and an outside Title IX investigator to investigate a Title IX complaint which resulted in high cost to the district. And one final, uh, comment on this was also made by the decision maker in the Title IX, uh, investigation we voted on tonight. The entire situation is complicated by the relationship between the, uh, executive director UIL and the respondent, in this case being the former superintendent. The handle of, of complainant's concerns raised in the complaint against the UDIL could not follow a normal process, given the district officials, who would normally investigate and take any action on such a complaint, all report to and are subordinate to the underlying respondent's spouse. This, that relationship caused respondent to represent to others, she'd recuse herself from any dealings with the EDU, EDUIL, uh, complaint on May 4th, 2023. The relationship presumably caused the board to retain outside counsel and to advise them in making decisions that would most certainly have otherwise been made by the district, by district officials. So that's all I want to say about that, but I, I was, wanted to respond to all the criticism that we did something irresponsible, and I want the public to know when they read, uh, in those reports, as I quoted, that you had the two, um, administrative law judges and the independent decision maker telling us the actual reason why we incurred over 1.8 million dollars in expenses that we shouldn't have had to. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Sitton?
Well, I like the fact that you read facts. That's awesome. Because I'm going to read some too. In the independent decision makers' report on the initial Title IX, it was widely reported that all employees engaged in banter in the athletic department. The fact that any of Mr. Kite's subordinates, including blank, may have participated in that banner does not undermine their credibility to raise a complaint. So I understand that. Mr. Kite was held to a higher standard because he was the head of that department. But a complaint was filed by someone, uh, that according to this was engaged in the same behavior. It furthermore goes on to another application of authority of facts. There is no dispute, the sexual banter has occurred in the athletics for many years. Mr. Kite is the leader of that department, but engaged in unprofessional sexually explicit comments, blah, blah, blah. Now, one thing I will point out is that Mr. Kite admitted to that, I believe in either May or July of 2023. Furthermore, that was the only allegation that he was found to have any responsibility of. Something that he had already admitted to on the front end. Something that our attorneys, who came out smelling like a rose, they received, Walsh and Gallegos received 51% of the 1.8, almost 1.9 million dollars. When in the beginning, when we hired Walsh and Gallegos, we were told it'll take four to six weeks, probably cost you 35, 40 grand. Fast forward nearly two years, nearly 1.9 million, uh, to get a finding that was what was admitted to roughly two months after the process started. So someone is going to have to really convince me that we needed to spend 1.9 million dollars to find out what we already knew. I'm not going to relitigate Dr. Fagan, Troy Kite, or anybody. That is the facts from the independent decision maker from the original Title IX, which is where most of this money went. I mean, it's all there. Y'all can see it. And through all the open records requests out there, you've got all the reports. I read right off of it. There's no guesswork here.
Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm really not sure where you're going with all that and how that is germane to my comments about what we spent and why. That was only the start. That was the, the tip of the iceberg, so to speak. What came out through the investigations, particularly that first, uh, Title IX investigation, opened up and, um, what really, as the judge said, unclogged the proverbial well when, uh, people began to come forward, uh, with their witness statements and their comments. So, so much was found out over that time that we didn't know when that first, um, non-Title, not the Title IX, but the very first report was issued. And I'm not going to get into relitigating that, because it's all there. It's in these three reports. What I read comes not from my mouth, but from the, uh, two, uh, TEA judges and a decision maker as to why we couldn't do this in-house, because it was compromised, because the person who should have been handling it was compromised because of a religion, uh, relationship she chose. And I'm not criticizing that or, or not, I'm telling you the fact. And that's what it come, came down to, and that's why the money had to be spent. And I, I, what you just went through, I, to me, is really not germane to what I was addressing and what I quoted. And I really, to me, uh, it's sad that it had to happen, but it did. And I look at, just like I said, even on the one brought against me, that was absolute waste of $93,000 by the district, $37,000 by me. And you saw what, what the result was. It was totally fabricated. So, anyway, uh, thank you, Madam President.
Anybody else? Our last information item, item seven D, financial services reports is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Moving on to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Yes, I would like, um, to have a report, um, I guess in closed session on what Uhujah and Clark is working on for Umbel ISD.
Do we need to vote on that, or?
We can't vote. I think we can get consensus if we want to have a report. Or you could probably make a decision on saying we can get a report.
But can, can I just a, ask that we be updated on that in closed?
Yes.
Do we need to poll the board? Okay, let's poll the board. Is there any appetite for that item? Two people?
Well, the, but Ms., Madam President, the people other than you, they're all on the committee, so they already have the information. So, I mean, honestly, I believe that in this instance, it doesn't have to have consensus. I do believe you can ask for a report in closed session.
Well, I will.
Because they have the information, so they don't need it.
Okay. Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, ma'am, for future board business, Madam President? Okay, not on that topic. Okay, uh, on the 25th of January, many of us attended Project Protect Our Children Gala, many of us up here and our spouses. Factors that contribute to child trafficking. This group gives an education on recognizing and identifying factors that will help us decipher, or better yet, prevent a child from being a victim. You know, we have 48,000 students. We are all responsible for their safety. Child trafficking, shockingly, is now the number two crime in the United States. It doesn't matter what you do, a teacher, admin, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, on and on, we can go, who can be educated on this topic. So, Madam President, I move to place an information item presented by Mrs. Denise Mears, who is the president and founder of Project Protect Our Children, on the 18th of March of 1925 agenda, on the topic of Project Protect Our Children.
Is there any interest in that item? Please raise your hand. Yeah, I want, so, four? Anyone? Okay. All right, um, we will get an information item about, it's really about, um, child trafficking.
It is.
Oh, you, so, okay, five. I'm sorry, Ms. Lamont Dixon, thank you very much.
I was raising my hand for the next item for future board business.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I wanted to also request an update on the detention pond, um, at the Umbel complex. Um, I get a lot of questions in the, um, Umbel community and the city of Umbel, um, and I would just like to get an update. We haven't had an update in a very long time on where that project is. So I would just like to request an update from the building and planning committee.
Madam President?
We cannot, we cannot.
No, we're not going to discuss.
I mean.
To just respond in terms of timing, we're, we're close. Will we be able to do that, um, Dr. Stever, at the next meeting, or?
We can provide an update. We won't be able to.
We can provide an update at the meeting. It won't be out for bid, but we can provide an update.
Or an update to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be at the meeting. But just as Ms. Martina, Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Yeah, if the board want, yeah, we can totally do that.
Because we're real close to, to that, so yes, we certainly can do that.
For clarification, do you need it publicly at the meeting, or can it be a report to us?
I, I would prefer to be public. That way I don't have to go back and share everything with people that are asking, if they could just watch the video. And, and, and I don't, and the first one that I had, I don't know if the question was answered on Uhujah and Clark. Did you make a decision on whether or not we can receive a report as a board? I believe legally we can get a report, because it is a board.
Anybody at this dais can, can ask any question they want at any time of the administration, period, full stop, right?
Okay.
Okay.
I will reach out to Dr. Brown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Sitton?
And I'd like to get, uh, for future board business, I'd like to get an update on the renaming of Sterling Middle School and Umbel Middle School. of Sterling Middle School and Umbel Middle School. It's been a few months and nothing.
All those in favor of that item?
Yeah, we're looking for an update. I mean.
I mean, it's in the minutes, I believe.
It'll be in the minutes.
It'll be in the minutes, so we haven't.
I'm holding those up because I got them today and have a chance to respond back. Go ahead and release them.
Do you need?
Mr. Scarfo, can you turn on your mic, please? I cannot hear.
I'm so sorry, I didn't see it was on. I was saying that it will be, the update on the naming will be in the minutes, but it's my fault they're not out yet because I got them today. I didn't have a chance to look at them and go ahead and say, yeah, release them. So tomorrow, and I'm pretty sure that's in the minutes because we discussed it at the...
It is.
Yes, yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
And for clarification, we want it publicly announced at the next board meeting, or can, are the minutes adequate for your satisfaction?
Well, I haven't seen the minutes, so I don't know if they're equipped for my satisfaction or not. But once I read them, if I still want to bring it up, then I'll bring it up.
Thank you. Anyone else? The time is now 9:22. This meeting is adjourned.